I think I'm already behind.
I'm throwing everyone off. Just moved the plot back. It's actually 7:15.
Oh, he didn't get it.
No, it's not. I don't think it's working. See, that's what you get on your house. Is everybody having your mic on? Could you, I'll make sure you have your microphones on. You know, the little blue. There's a little blue button on your, should be a little blue light on your mic.
Do you have that little blue light on?
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain, here. Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Eric Chofu, here. Trustee Cole Yang?
Here.
Trustee Germaine?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Petrucci. Is there any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five is called to the public. Good evening.
Good evening. Glenn Wilkinson, I just have a brief comment, and that is that it looks to me like the township has been operating well for the last five months without a manager, and it doesn't seem like there was any reason to really rush into having a manager or hiring anybody to do that work until it's felt that the workload is, to the township, is so great that you need somebody in that capacity, and there are other options besides managers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Thank you. We'll move on to item number six, which is approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have an applicant this evening. Good evening. If you'd like to come up to the table here, I believe it's Graham, and Graham is with the Pearl Development. This is a site plan application and a PD process, which is a plan development, Heartland Senior Living. We do have Troy Langer, our planner, here this evening to review the, first of all, where we are in the process and what's been proposed, and then we can open up to any questions that the board may have. Welcome, Graham.
Thank you, thank you, Board, and Troy and Bob for having us here this evening with Pearl. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let me just give a brief description as to where this project is located. This is a zoning map of Heartland Township. I'm going to zoom in here. Just bear with me. So this is US 23 going north and south in this location, and then this is M-59 going east and west in this location. If you were at that major intersection and you traveled on M-59 going east, you would come out to this general location right here. It is these, this parcel that's green, and then these two smaller parcels up on M-59. It is this property right here that we're looking at. I have an aerial view of that. So I know this only highlights one of the parcels. I can only highlight one at a time. But this is the property that we're looking at. You can see M-59. You can see the township park property further to the east. So this is where this project is located. Let me give a little bit. This is a site plan. Now unfortunately, it is not at the same, north would be off to the side here, M-59, to the south here. So this is the general site plan of the project. It's a 146-unit apartment complex that caters towards seniors, seniors that are, I'll just paraphrase it, mostly independent. They're potentially needing some, they can contract to have some kind of service. That's often done by third party. This facility would have common facilities such as dining room, and it also has a variety of activities that the clientele that would live here could partake in. So this is the building. It's a three-story building in this back portion, and then the front portion up here is a single story. And as Supervisor Fountain had mentioned, it's a plan development, PD, that's a three-step, what I'll commonly call the three-step process. The first step is conceptual review to the planning commission and to the board. They've already done that. They've gone through the concept phase. The second step is the preliminary plan review, and that's where we're at with this. They've gone to the planning commission. They have received a recommendation of approval from the planning commission for this project. The next step for them is to be in front of the board, which they are here tonight, and then the last step will be the final phase. And at that point, we're pretty much done with all the site plan issues. We are looking at, they'll have a cross-access connection here to the west, and we'll look at any of the legal documents, easements, or other documents. That'll be wrapped up in the final phase. So that's a quick overview of the project, a quick overview of the process that they're going through, and I'll be able to answer any questions you want. Graham is here. If you want him to do a presentation, he has a PowerPoint. Otherwise, he's there to answer any questions.
Joe Kalani, do you have any further comments?
Just that we did have, several people did come up and comment on the new development. It was generally favorable. The people, the one person that had some comments was a property owner to the, immediately to the east, which is between the township property park and this development. He wanted to be sure that much of the growth along the eastern side of the development, the natural trees that are there and brush would remain, and to the extent that they could add additional landscaping to provide, basically where there were gaps, that we would do that. I think our recommendation, if I recall, we were going to move some of those plantings that would be in the front and move them over to the side versus having as much in the front. There was no changes to landscaping around the detention pond because there was a lot of natural growth already over there. So the developer was very, you know, accommodating to all those kind of issues. There was some discussion regarding the lighting on the site. That was resolved at the time of the planning commission based on the light, what did it call it, the graph that?
Photometric.
Photometric graph, yes. That, once we kind of walked through that, that didn't seem to be an issue. But you can see, as a residential property owner, Jason, he wants to minimize the light pollution from coming from that or stretching over to his property, and I think we can accommodate that fairly easily. So those are the main comments. I think the rest of it, we went through and we got through the agreement fairly well, so.
Graham, could you just refresh us as to, this is senior facility?
Yeah, that's correct.
What product and what kind of offerings will this building have?
So it's one and two-bedroom senior units. They are restricted, I believe, to 55-plus. It's either 55 or 62, but it's at least 55-plus. And, I'm sorry, did you ask regarding rental rates?
Like the M and D?
No, just, is this for those that need some medical help, or is this more geared towards seniors that are just looking to maybe downsize in the area? I'm just curious as to what you're offering.
It's much more of a second. It's for seniors who are looking to downsize. It's, you know, it's not assisted living. It's not a memory care facility, but it would offer an onsite, third-party, home-based healthcare provider that can assist with some, you know, more basic activities of daily living. So not someone who is, you know, coming out of a hospital and really needs intensive services, but, you know, they have a home-based healthcare that can provide a kind of like level of service as an add-on. In addition, there would be, as Troy mentioned, a dining room onsite. The tenants would have the option to purchase kind of a meal package that lines up. What they're looking for is physical therapy, room, exercise equipment, a media room, a library, a couple of different community rooms. So really to promote socialization and kind of re-employment. And yes, our operating partner here is Lockwood Companies up Southfield, and they own a number of these facilities in the area, and their average age of new residents in these facilities is, I think it's 75. So people who are kind of, you know, they're getting ahead of some of the health problems that come from being later on road, selling their house, downsizing, but still able to maintain a really active lifestyle.
Thank you. Other board members?
What do you anticipate the average cost would be to live there?
Certainly. So for, well, let me step back for a second and say there's, this development is sort of unique in a way that it provides an opportunity for about 40% of the residents to pay what would be considered an affordable rate, while the remaining 60 are market-rate tenants. So for the market-rate tenants here in the facility, rents range from, I believe it's right around $2,100 to $3,500. You know, it's market rate for these facilities, which is quite steep. And for affordable tenants, it's in the $1,000 to $1,500 range. And how this works is, this is not a sub-sized property. It's not Section 8. The tenants who move in qualify by income. So for a senior who has social security income or small pension, a grandma, for example, would certainly qualify. I believe the income threshold for a single person is in the $30,000 range. And so the way these facilities typically operate is residents are attracted to this. It kind of provides a way of sort of serve their assets. So you move into a market-rate unit and quickly get your name on the waiting list for one of the affordable units, and, you know, stretch out your assets longer, save your family from having to chip in to support the tenant for longer. So there's this kind of two-tiered structure here. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Do some of these tenants drive?
Yes.
Do they, are they going to be allowed to own a car and park it there?
Yep.
Do you have ample parking for all of those people?
We do. We provide a kind of round one parking space per unit, which is actually a little bit higher than the parking counts that are typically seen at Lockwood-owned facilities. At Lockwood facilities, they typically provide somewhere in the .85 to .9 space per unit range, and they found that that has ample parking. And really, you know, maybe three-quarters of residents own a vehicle. That works out. It provides plenty of space for visitors and staff.
Joe, there are some shelters that they have that they, and part of the discussion at the planning commission was, I think we didn't have a problem with those shelters except some of the backing. We wanted, there were some comments on materials, but other than that, there are, but not all the spots are obviously covered.
What is this? That the retention pond, is that?
Yeah, that's detention pond.
There's a walkway around it?
Yep.
Do you have any outside activities for them, other than walking around?
Well, I think kind of in the area that's the courtyard area?
Here?
There would be, you know, benches, seating. It's, you know, the plans haven't been quite developed to that level yet, but we'd certainly look at that as an area for outdoor amenities. Also, in the front of the building, kind of near where the dining, yes, right where the mouse is there, that's an outdoor dining area. So, you know, it's outside on the nice night like tonight.
Thank you.
So could you repeat everything you said tonight so far?
And Joe, there's an 80-acre park right next to Lockwood.
Yes.
And the bus that goes to the senior center, full of things to do.
And then you have the Lincoln Conservancy property right behind it to the north. So there'd be a lot of places where you could go out for a walk. Other questions?
I just hope that because they're able to drive in there, that this area right here, and MDOT's going to take a good, hard look at that.
Yes.
So they can go in and out safely.
Yep, yeah, and they are. We have submitted an application to MDOT for preliminary review for a driveway permit there and have completed a traffic study as well. So working with MDOT, I know that was a condition of the preliminary PD, is that that driveway location is more or less fixed, and so we're working with MDOT to make sure we got the right deceleration lane, that the approach is correct. But the early discussions with them have been very good, so.
Great.
Do you have an idea how many employees there would be at once it's completely occupied?
So I believe that the normal number of employees per shift would be about in the 15 to 18 range, and that's, you know, the property manager, property staff, as well as, you know, the maintenance staff, kitchen staff. So I would imagine in total, it would employ somewhere in the 25 to 30 range of total employees.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, it's, I'm going to ask it, but it doesn't really have any bearing on this project moving forward with tonight's approval, but you're going to need water here, and I'm wondering if the water extension, the plot project that the township has planned is going to hold you up, or what's the status of that at this point?
Sure. And I think Bob can probably speak better to that than I can, but we've been working closely with Bob and his team on that, and it appears that everything's kind of working in concert together. So we're, you know, we're not close to breaking ground here. There's still a number of hoops, you know. We need to turn this conceptual plan into something that can be built, and that takes several months, and then, you know, line up all the documents required to get financing together. So we're really at least eight months away from construction, if not more, and I think that fits well with the timeline for the township water extension.
Yeah, I could certainly weigh in on there briefly. We do have collectively amongst all the developers, a Gantt chart, if you will, with milestones, which kind of sets the point where each developer has to be in the process. At this point in time, nobody's behind in schedule. In fact, some people or some developers are actually ahead of schedule. So we do not see a risk at this point in time for any mishaps with the water extension or any scheduled or unforeseen delays at this time. Kind of helped out in that conversation.
Could you show some, give us an idea what it's going to look like?
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's just preliminary, but.
Let me see here. Whoops. I have those. Oh, yeah, here we go. So this is kind of a building elevation. This is the front elevation with the front door. You can see it's at a single story, and then behind that is three-story. So it's very residential in its look. There's some stone, cement board.
And part of that too, Joe, is because of the, how it's low, if you look off 59, it appears high when you're looking at it like this, but from M-59, it's actually going to be lower because the ground is substantially low, lower there. Does that make sense? So kind of that offsetting look is what the planning commission looked at.
Any other questions? If there are any, any final comments, Graham?
No, I just want to thank everyone once again for your time this evening, for considering our proposal, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Troy, any final questions?
No. You know, I kept my presentation very brief. You know, there's a lot of details to this. I didn't mean to gloss over any of that, and we've worked with this applicant for quite some time to get the plan to where you see it today, so.
I'll move to approve, as outlined in the staff memorandum, updated August 26, 2020, approval of site plan application number 20-005, the preliminary plan development, site plan for Heartland Senior Living, subject to the following. These were items that were detailed at the planning commission. One, waiver request on the minimum lot size requirement for plan development being less than 20 acres is approved. Two, waiver request on the building height being greater than 35 feet is approved. Three, waiver request to deviate from the maximum allowable and minimal facade material percentages is approved. Four, the site plan is subject to the current location of the access drive connecting to M-59. In the event that the access drive needs to be relocated more than 10 feet in either direction, the applicant will need to submit a site plan to the planning commission for review to amend the approved site plan. Five, as part of the final plan review, the applicant shall secure an ingress egress easement agreement for proposed access drive connection to the adjacent property to the west, that is Trillium Center Office Building at 12319 Highland Road, which would afford a secondary emergency access for the development. Six, the applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noted in the planning department's memorandum updated August 13, 2020, on the construction plan set, subject to an administrative review by planning staff prior to the issuance of the land use permit. And seven, applicant complies with any requirements of the township engineering consultant, Department of Public Works Director, Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority, and all other governmental agencies as applicable. Support.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Germaine. Larry, did you get all that written down?
Yep.
Any other questions?
I was trying to move slow.
Any other questions? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Safe trip home, wherever you're headed.
Thank you, yes. Just back to Ann Arbor for the end.
Good. Pending a new business, 8A is a staff stipend recommendation for personal data use. Through the COVID pandemic, staff worked, several staff worked remotely for several months, and this was a small stipend for those that were using their own data, and some of those people had to utilize some additional data on their phone or on their computer at their house. So we felt it was fair.
Cell phones, toner, all kinds of things.
Yeah, toner and different things. So we felt it was fair to compensate them for their efforts during that period.
It's just staff, not board members?
Yeah, it was just staff. Staff that wasn't in the office.
Right.
Because the DPW director and such was here pretty much every day regardless. Any questions on that?
I'll move to approve a one-time stipend to eligible staff for usage of personal cellular and internet data not to exceed the total of $1,350.
Support.
And budget amendment, as required.
Support.
Yeah, motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Harper. Is there any other discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 8B is a township truck purchase. It was ironic, about a month and a half ago, we had a meeting here discussing the older vehicle, and we were confident that we were going to be able to continue to use that for several years. And the next morning, one of our staff had an interaction with a deer and totaled the vehicle. So we asked our, and I think I'm going to turn this over to Bob, we asked Bob to take a look at what the insurance would be on that vehicle, and the state offers a significant discount through, and I'll let you finish the rest of the details.
Absolutely, thank you. What you have before you is an approval to secure the purchases of a new township truck through what's known as the MyDeal procurement agreement, which is through the state of Michigan. Basically, the fine 2009 Chevrolet Silverado was damaged and totaled, as previously mentioned. The township insurance company declared it a total and issued a claim in the amount of $9,700 to the township. So in shopping for a new vehicle through the MyDeal procurement agreement, the currently, as far as 2020 models go, in the particular configuration that we were seeking, the lowest-priced vehicle happened to be a 2020 Ram pickup truck. The MSRP on that vehicle is $35,895, but through the MyDeal procurement, the actual cost to the township would be $23,850 for the vehicle. So I'm seeking approval of that. Furthermore, you'll notice the budget amendment is substantially higher because in the tune of $24,979, and that is basically for the lighting package. We add a toolbox on that, and of course, our lettering on the side of the vehicle. So MyDeal does not offer those accessories, but essentially, the $24,979 vehicle, all-inclusive, offset by the insurance claim, will result in an indirect cost to the township of $15,279.
So basically, so we're, to clarify, we're going to authorize up to $24,000.
The budget amendment will be for the 24, but I'll basically facilitate getting it lettered, the toolbox. The actual agreement from MyDeal needs to be signed at the actual truck purchase amount.
Right. And then, but there'll be an offset at some point, depending on how the insurance comes out.
Correct. They've already determined, made the determination. We haven't received the check yet, but they just, I think 48 hours ago, picked up the old truck from the salvage company, and we're waiting for the check. But they did declare it. We do have the paperwork indicating the claim was $9,700, and, you know, subsequently, a check will be cut to us.
Okay.
So in our discussions, we talked about, you know, that was a used vehicle when we purchased it.
Yes.
And we were planning on continuing to use it. And if anybody's tried to find a used vehicle right now, it's not only difficult, but they're very expensive. So the recommendation was to come in front of the board to use those, the insurance dollars and that program to basically buy a new vehicle for 15.
Ever since we've essentially participated in the MyDeal program, it's what all the neighboring municipalities as well as state organizations use. It's just, doesn't make financial sense to purchase a vehicle unless you're going to be more than 10 years old and you have a set limit, but even then, you're taking a bigger risk gamble on repairs and maintenance. The discount of nearly, you know, over $10,000 off this vehicle through the state of Michigan is just, we can't touch it even on the used market.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, I have a question. In work session a month or so ago, before this accident happened, we were talking about removing the standard pickup box and replacing it with something more appropriate for use. Is the truck that we're authorizing the purchase of a standard pickup box or?
This is a standard pickup box. And the previous thought was the original, the prior truck was in such good shape from the cab forward that it might be cost-effective and we could probably find a cheaper than replacing the bed. And it would be just as functional. In the grand scheme of things, less than 24 hours after that discussion, the nicer half of the vehicle was matched the back. So it wasn't necessary that we desired to have a stake bed or a flat bed. It just seemed more cost advantageous and would offer the same functionality of a replacement bed.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion to approve the purchase of a new township truck through the MyDeal procurement agreement in the amount not to exceed $23,850 as presented.
Support.
Motion by trustee Germaine, second by trustee Kalani. Is there any other discussion?
Should we add, including a budget amendment?
Does that have to be a separate motion?
No, we put them in the same one usually.
Essentially, it proves whatever's in here. And I do want to call attention to, I'm asking to be the authorized agent on behalf, because I'll have to assign for the paperwork when the vehicle arrives here as well, as well as at the Secretary of State. So I just want to make clarification. I should have added that as well.
So the resolution is motion to approve the purchase of a new township truck through the MyDeal procurement agreement in an amount not to exceed $23,850 as presented, as, including a budget amendment for that amount, and to authorize the DPW director to be the authorized agent of the township to complete this transaction.
I think that's good. But according to the sheet, the budget amendment is a larger amount, $24,979.
That's right. You're right. Sorry.
We're a great team, Joe.
I know.
So I amend my motion, please?
Sure.
You still support it, Joe?
I do, of course.
Is this a resolution?
No.
It's not a resolution. Okay. So we had a motion and a support. Is there any other discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go into board reports. Trustee Harper?
No report.
Trustee Petrucci?
No report.
Klik Shofu?
No report.
Treasurer Horni?
Got to mention the farmer's market. We had 10 new vendors this week. I mean, it was full from one end to the other. It was amazing. We have more produce vendors this year. It's awesome. And as far as the senior center goes, I've been helping on their committee to develop a new strategic plan. We finished that up last week, and it was delivered to us this week. And they've got a lot of great action plans and goals. I think Kim, in her annual meeting with us, will probably go over some of that. That was really a great process.
Thank you. Trustee Kalani?
Yes, last night, the Heartland Teen Center Board, Hero Board, met for their annual meeting. And the officers of that organization remained the same. We have our annual golf outing, which is our main fundraising event that takes place annually at the Majestic Golf Course. Originally, it's usually in June. We moved that date to September 13th. It's a Sunday. We're looking for golfers. This year, we're not going to have a, you know, a meal like we normally do on a banquet. Rather, it's going to be a boxed lunch. And there'll be other events as part of that fundraising event. It is our biggest fundraising event. We are going, we are not seeking a lot of what we normally do in years past, look for sponsorships from our local businesses, because they've all struggled during this COVID-19. We're going to encourage them. They would like to play, they can play without donating anything and participate in the event. So we're going to be reaching out to our local businesses for that reason as well. So if you can, for those who are interested, you can purchase a whole sponsorship. And you can also donate anytime to the teen center. This is a, we are already having kids show up for our teen center. It's open four days a week. And we have a process to make sure the area is cleaned each night and before the end of the weekend. So those are all the things that the teen center is doing. The other thing I will mention that we will have, I think, a report coming next month?
Yes.
I think they said in about 30 days, well, similar to what Kathy mentioned for the senior center, the Heartland Teen Center will be doing the same thing, bringing forth kind of a, you know, what we've done in the last year and what the plan is for the future. So.
Thank you. Trustee Germaine?
I just support everything Joe just said. The teen center is a great after-school program. It, I think we're into our eighth or ninth year now. I'm losing track. But the attendance before the school shut down last spring was the highest we'd ever had. And so we're anticipating that this will be another great year. And it serves a really good purpose for the whole community. We do encourage the financial donations as much as possible.
And we're always looking for volunteers and people who want to help serve on the board, right?
We need people on the board.
Yes, we do.
I'd like to just add that the teen center is open, even though the high school is not, because junior high school kids come to it, middle school kids are now attending it. And as the high school opens, there'll be kids from the high school coming over as well. So it is open.
Thank you. And then Bob, while you're here, just a reminder of big item pickup day?
Large item cleanup day is September 19th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the high school student parking lot. So bring what you have. There's really, the only thing off limits is anything that's classified as hazardous, which would include your batteries, your paints, your stains, anything oil-based. Otherwise, seems to be all fair game.
What about the refrigerators? What do you have to do if there's anything?
So the refrigerators or anything with freon, there is a fee for that. The fee is $25 per appliance, unless there is no freon in it. We do basically tag those particular items, but we will take them at the event.
TVs, tube TVs?
Tube TVs at this time are accepted. We've heard some rumors about subsequent years that they may not be. But at this point in time, they are accepted for this event.
Is there a fee?
There is not a fee at this time.
Old computer monitors?
The CRT monitors, there is not a fee for at this time. Subsequent years, we cannot guarantee that. It seems to be more and more challenging, whether it's the tube TVs. What we also see kind of legislation challenging is tires, tire recycling. So I can't guarantee that this event will continue to look the same. We will certainly push it forward as best we can. But at this time, we are accepting the tires. They are limited to standard passenger car tires and passenger truck, light truck tires. We, and the TVs, we will take the CRT TVs at this point in time.
Cool.
Thank you. I don't have anything else this evening. Anybody else have anything? Before we take a brief recess, and we'll go into our work session?
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Troy.
Do you want to make sure that that's off before we go in? Do you want to go check with it and make sure?